Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 14th City Council Work Session Meeting. Excited that everyone is here. Councilman Ely, I don't think is going to be here. I know he was excited to get his honorary degree from VPCC, so we will excuse him for this work session. Additionally, I have Mr. Flat Stanley, who was sent in from Renaya in first grade. So Flat Stanley has signed, set NDAs, and will be involved in all discussions. So I'll turn it over to Bo. Thank you.
Well, before...
I'm sorry. Turn it over, Dallas.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the City Council. As many of you know, the Bloomberg-Harvard cross collaboration track began last August. City staff and select individuals from our community partners have been working intensely since January to bring new ideas and momentum to our downtown revitalization through this particular initiative. The mayor, along with the team, met with a group of community stakeholders on April the 18th to provide an update. This evening, Assistant City Manager Bo Clayton will provide a brief update to council on the team's efforts and results as part of this process, and where they envision future focus from the city, as well as our partners from the community, including the Navy and Newport New Shipyard, our residents, and business owners.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager. As the City Manager mentioned, I'm just going to take a few minutes to update you on our Bloomberg efforts that started quite a few months ago, when we started out in New York in August, and then we have transitioned a little bit. Just a reminder from our last brief in October, this was the timeline for our Bloomberg-Harvard cross collaboration track. On the left-hand side over here is not depicted, but on the 4th of December was when we had our kickoff meeting with several community members, the mayor and several community members, as well as some of the Harvard attendees that started the cross collaboration track. I was privileged to work with a team of eight individuals, four staff, and four community partners from across our community, everything from the Economic Development Authority to the shipyard, to our faith leaders, as well as one of our major industries, Ferguson itself. We were one of 10 cities across the world that were chosen for the cross collaboration track. The other two tracks, Innovation and Data. As it was a Harvard project, there was quite a bit of instruction as part of this, and Harvard led the instruction about a sequential process and the associated strategy to develop the collaborative approach. And this slide kind of briefly covers the perspective of what we did throughout these several months as a team, as we engaged internally, but also as we engaged with other cities from around this collective group. This process took great care in ensuring there is public value of a project in defining and analyzing the exact, not the perceived, problem, and then coaching us to ensure that all aspects, such as equity, were considered throughout the process. So one of the, one aspect was really the scoping to ensure that the effort was manageable. Our team decides to scope the focus area to 23rd Street to 35th Street, West Avenue to Warwick Avenue. That's outlined here in yellow that you'll see depicted on the screen, but just one caveat, just because it, I want to make sure that it's not meant to exclude anything, but it was more about focusing to a particular area for our actionable items that we developed over the course of these several months. The second focus was really the public value, the "so what." So this is our value proposition, that we were going to tackle downtown revitalization through investment and quality of life services. I'll provide a little bit more of an extensive list towards the end of the brief, but what we mean by quality of life services, some examples are restaurants, maybe laundry, maybe barber shops, it may be childcare. So those are the quality of life services that we're looking for in the downtown area particularly. And why do we do that? We want to do that for our residents, not only this defined area, but the adjacent areas to this, as well as across the city that could use this, our Navy sailors, as well as our Newport New Shipbuilding employees, and the lack of quality of life services that exist right now in this focused area of downtown. As I mentioned, we did a thorough analysis of the problem. We constructed a problem, we deconstructed it, we reconstructed it, we deconstructed it again. This was a, what you see here is the fishbone diagram. You may have used this in other processes before, but what it does is it allowed us to, you see the elements surrounding that on the outside, but it allowed us to really dive down, and when we got to the final construction of our problem, we put it as this. We defined it as downtown lacks private and public investment and is perceived negatively, which leaves, which leaves a void of services, housing opportunities, and entertainment venues. So that's what we wanted to focus on. You had to get that problem right and really identified that to begin with. A little bit of a busy slide, but let me, and I'll be quick on this one, but let me draw your attention to the strategic triangle represented by the graphic here below. There's three elements. There's the legitimacy and support, there's the operational capacity, and there's the public value. When you're looking at an issue, that issue and how your tangible, your actual actionable actions, or excuse me, your actions should address those. You see on the right-hand side of the slide, a couple that are identified on who is providing that and what they're specifically providing a little bit, and it's by the corresponding colors. But really, it boils down to the yellow box in the bottom. So let me focus your attention there, excuse me, but I'm going to read that, but that's really the best explanation of what we were trying to get to. Our approach to addressing the problem is relying on those three areas that I mentioned, legitimacy and support from the community, operational capacity to provide for the community, and public value to the community. So what does all this mean? Well, it boils down to results. What is, that's really what matters, what you achieve. So while we've, while we've had the opportunity to really look at this, some of this has, did start before, but we've leveraged this, and we think we've built some momentum as part of this. We're pretty excited, and I hope you are too, as far as what's, what are some of the things that are occurring down here? What we mean by some of this is, for example, we, after meeting as a team and looking at the things that needed to be actioned here in the downtown, one of the things that was missing was the data. So we began aggregating data for the different investors to provide to them and allow them the, or provide them the information of what they're looking for so they can invest, and they will be more, more likely to invest. You know, some of these being the market analysis, the land inventories, those types of things. We started a summer concert series as part of the green space activation. We've got a couple of green spaces down here. Summer Concert Series beginning on the 6th of June will run through the 29th of August every Thursday night, and we think that's going to, we think that's really going to help. It's a beautiful location down here at Victory Landing Park, and that, as part of what we've done with the James, the James River Strand, that project, we think all that's going to really come together. We've engaged with the, with the shipyard, we've engaged with the Navy, we've engaged with multiple investors. I'll speak a little bit more about that next. We already have an RFP out for our train station restaurant. We have quite a few that are interested in that. As you well know, we have a state budget amendment. We're pretty, pretty happy about that. There was a lot of work done on that, of up to $40 million. We've done some community group engagements. We need to do some more. So we acknowledge that. Of course, there's the Reconnecting Communities Grant. Development was successful in getting Life Media Group to really leverage and communicate and do the marketing efforts for a lot of our yard district, which is defined by this area as well. And then, of course, you see down at the bottom several of the, the new housing improvements that are underway. So some good, good momentum here on what's been done.
Before you go off that slide, just a quick question. The RFP for train stations, has it been opened up to the public, or is it going to be...
Today.
Today? Okay, all right.
We're sending information out to the mayor.
Okay, perfect.
Dr. Woodbury, you have a question?
Yeah, I wanted to ask about the Connecting Communities Grant. What has, what's been done with that, and who is in charge of it?
So planning is in charge of the reconnect, planning and engineering, actually engineering, excuse me, is in charge of the Reconnecting Communities Grant, and that is to conduct the planning for the Garden Street Bridge that was part of the Downtown Reimagine Plan some time ago, so that's what that's looking at. So that, that grant alone will not do the actual construction, but it will do the planning portion of that.
Now, remember the outline for it, but has anything actually taken place?
No, this grant is for the planning to begin. That's correct.
So when is the date, or when is the actual implementation?
I'm looking for...
Yeah.
Yeah, correct.
But we're probably talking not till fall. We don't, we don't have anything under contract with the government. We don't have that funding yet. So we're probably talking fall timeframe before we see anything moving in that that we can afford.
We don't have, not gotten the grant itself?
We don't have the funds for that at this time, no. Yeah, all...
All, yeah, all the paperwork and so forth, all of the, that still needs to be, that still...
Have you submitted?
Oh, yeah, no, we've been awarded it, we just don't have all the paperwork completed to proceed at this time.
For some reason, this isn't working, farewell.
So what is the date on starting the proceeding?
Well, I have to get you the actual date. I'm just saying all the paperwork.
All the paperwork, all the paperwork is not done yet, so we have to complete that. We have to get with the federal government. We don't have the information from them yet to complete what's needed and necessary to move forward at this time, but hopefully, but fall timeframe is what we're talking about.
So these are some of our potential actions going forward. We want to continue to host investors that are out there, developers that are looking, but we're looking for those developers and investors that are ready to action now. We have things that can be actioned now, and that's what we're ready for. That's why we're reaching out, development plan, others have been reaching out for some time. The EDA has been big on that, and really, that's a key part of it. Second one, I kind of put something up here as far as ordinance, so we may be coming back to council to that, to move some of these. We've got some vacant properties down here that have been vacant for some time, and it's time to move those along as part of our revitalization down here, and that's what we want to do going forward. We think that may be a potential action moving forward. Of course, the marketing efforts, as we build these, activation of the green space, as we get more events and restaurants and other businesses down here, we want to make sure that those are marketed in the right way and get more traffic down here to this location. We need to solicit, I mentioned it earlier, we need to solicit some more input from the community. These are some of the, the elements or the, that we want to really reach out to, and this was a major emphasis of the program. And of course, we'll continue with the activation of the green space and some of the entertainment venues.
Bo, can you go back one slide, please? Perhaps a question for Florence and Development. When you look at the national level developers, what's the capital stack required? Is it 10 million under management, 20 million? I would imagine for different projects, there's different amounts, but what is like a good developer? And the second question would be, I know I get a lot of emails and phone calls, "Hey, I'm so-and-so developer, would love to schedule time to come down and talk to you." Do we have a process people can say, "Hey, unless you have 400 million under, you know, AUM, you can't invest"? What's the criteria with that?
We don't have specific criteria for telling someone they can't invest, so we will entertain conversations because people might be interested in one thing, and then we can get them interested in something smaller. What we really need in terms of some of the initiatives with Navy and the shipyard is to, once we get some of that information, some of it's going to be privatization, and we've got to talk about what the opportunities are for the private sector, and until we get those definitive answers out of the Navy type of collaboration. But what practice that we are doing is that we are going to post RFPs and, and really try to hope that people get it two or three different ways to draw development interest here. So we're not like looking at a massive developer to take everything. We're trying to find, you know, opportunities, big and small, for, for development growth.
Is it a consortium approach? Is you're trying to get as many people involved as possible, or how are you trying to look at the different developers?
Well, I mean, for the, you know, historic, you know, people that are interested in doing some historic renovation, it seems people are interested, like the Greek church, we're doing separate from, you know, we posted today the train station. Our goal is to do the Greek church within the next 30 or 45 days. It's a larger project. You start looking at the size and capacity because you just don't want to create a limit of someone coming in because then we get, we lose the opportunity for people to feel like they have a right. But ultimately, as we do each RFP criteria, we are going to have to build evaluation criteria around capacity and capital investment, and so I think it's too early to honestly give you, you know, equity numbers or those types of specifics. As, as we evolve, we can, we provide you that information.
A follow-on question. Is there like a calendar of like when RFPs are going to be presented? So when developers do reach out, you can, you can kind of give them a timeline of when these different RFPs are going to be posted?
We should.
Okay.
We, we don't have a calendar. We've got targets and goals.
Okay.
To get them, get them going. But, but when we have conversation, we talk about emerging opportunities, we take people's names, and we let them know in addition to it, getting posted on Eva and different locations, that we will directly send the notifications to them so they know. We go through our purchasing department, and so, and you got year in and dealing with that, so we can target when we think we're going to get them out. But it takes not just, you know, the initiation of the paperwork, but we've got, you know, multiple departments have to coordinate on getting it out and getting it posted. So, so sometimes there can be a little slippage on, that's why we talk in terms of months as being our targets.
Yeah. I mean, the main thing is making sure the developers that are coming to the city are aware of when they should be looking for...
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Any other questions on this slide? Okay. So really, the last thing to leave you with is this. I direct, think back to the strategic triangle that I mentioned as far as legitimacy and support, operational capacity, and public value. We've identified a lot of the quality of life services that I've mentioned, but here's a little more detailed list as this, and of course, it's not all-inclusive. We've identified the data for what, a lot of the data that we're compiling and aggregating for those investors to provide to them, and then also who is going to be served by the actionable items. So this, this is really tried to identify a lot of those. We believe through these and this collaborative approach that has been developed as part of this, this Bloomberg-Harvard effort, and through the approach with our community partners, our business owners, our investors, Navy, shipyard, and of course, our staff, that we'll be, we'll see some tangible results downtown. We're already seeing some of those. We expect to see many more in the coming months.
I'd just like to say, well, to ask, has there been any ideas that have come forward, particularly as it relates to transportation, for the sailors? Because I'm thinking about when we broke ground on that, I think it's the East Coast Ship Repair around Harbor Homes, the old Harbor Homes property, there was a bus tour that took us back there to that ship, but it, it went in the, well, Harbor Homes is like 14th and, and Terminal. It went back there further down and, and across another small bridge area to the ships. So if we're doing this, I just hope that you all would think about making sure, because I, I can imagine that a lot of the sailors won't come because it's too, it's too lengthy to walk, and plus, there's no clear walkway. And so I hope that it would be some kind of, maybe our, our new, new for new shuttle bus, that, that would be a good idea, because I hope somebody really looks at the logistics of it, because where their position, you know, if I was on the ship, I wouldn't, I wouldn't walk here. Maybe, possibly, I don't even know if you could Uber, would the Uber come in that area?
Not so much that area, but you know, what we really focused our, our work on was in that, that yellow square, the 23rd, excuse me, 23rd to 35, in that area. Focused on the sailors that were primarily the unaccompanied sailors that are working on the ships in the shipyard itself, not as much down on the Terminal Avenue area. So that's what a lot of this was focused on. I don't know if anyone else, but we can certainly look at that as far as...
Yeah, I would imagine because...
...any transportation down there as an extension of that if we, and I'll need to get with Superintendent of the Shipyard to see how many sailors are actually transiting down there, what their, what's their, what's their needs are.
Right, because I would imagine they would probably want to participate, but with the logistics being like it is, I, I can see that really being a problem.
Yeah, it was, it was primarily focused on those sailors that are living in this area, Huntington Hall, Homeport, those types, and engaging them with the services within walking range of their areas, but also for them to frequent our businesses in the area as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I think we're good. Thanks, Bo. Mr. Manager.
Yes, our next presentation is about the effective tax rate, which has to do with your, the period, or your agenda later on this evening. So as you know, we're holding the required FY 2025 effective tax rate public hearing this evening, and we want to take this opportunity to go through the required language of the public hearing. I do want to be clear that the FY 2025 operating budget does not include a real estate tax increase. The proposed rate for your consideration this evening is maintaining the current rate at $1.18, and at this time, Budget Director Lisa Cipriano will give us a brief presentation on the required public hearing this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and good afternoon, City Council. As the City Manager indicated, the state requires certain activities during the budget process. What starts this particular public hearing is the reassessment process. So state law requires every locality to have a public hearing on the tax rate that is either proposed or will be maintained if the levy or the reassessment changes by 1% or more. This year, for FY 25, based on our March numbers from our real estate assessor, the increase is 2.14, so that triggers this public hearing that we will have tonight. My apologies to the lawyers in this room, but the effective tax rate language is required by state code. It's specifically written in the state code, and it is not necessarily as clear as it could be for the average reader. So what basically the public hearing tonight is first acknowledging that without a change in the tax rate, but an increase in the assessment level, the tax rate to generate the exact same dollars that we are in the current year would be $1.155. Because of the tax, the reassess- Because of the tax, the reassessment, the actual tax rate is going to generate more revenue. So this lowered tax rate is if we wanted to generate the exact same amount of revenue with the increase in the real estate tax levy, okay? We don't. We want to take advantage of the levy change, of the reassessment change. So what the action tonight is to affirm the tax rate at $1.18. And remember that the real estate average for single-family dwellings is about 4.9. Not all properties, not all subdivisions will see that same increase. The median increase on the houses, single-family dwellings are going from 255 to 268. So again, we are not increasing the tax rate, but because your assessment is higher, you are in effect paying more taxes. And for the average person, average single-family dwelling, it will be $152 a year. So we have not, in the Budget Department, had one citizen comment. We haven't had any emails or questions, but sometimes there are individuals who are confused by this very legalese language and may come tonight to make the, any comments. But City Council is not raising the tax rate. Okay? Any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I know we talked in previous discussions that there was a certain percentage of veterans, disabled vets.
Yes.
What is that total amount?
For the upcoming fiscal year, it will be about $6.2 million in tax relief combined. That's the hardship tax relief, the deferred tax, and for disabled veterans, all combined will be about $6.2 million.
And do you see that rising in the future?
Yes.
Is it going to remain flat?
Yes, it will certainly rise as it was pointed out to us. And it's something that's hard to kind of wrap your head around, but the United States has been in armed conflict for over 20 years. So we're not thinking about only Vietnam veterans. We're thinking about all the Iraqi war, the Afghanistan veterans who are now qualified through any armed conflict to qualify this regardless of their age, but of their disability, if they come to live in Newport News. The state over the years, this was first enacted in 2012, the state through a constitutional action has broadened that over the years, over the last 10, 12 years, to include subsequent residences, surviving spouses, and most recently for military members killed in action. So the expansion keeps on going on the broadness of the tax exemption, and it can only go up at this particular point.
Okay. I'll save my comments for next budget cycle, but would love to see tax relief built in for some of our elderly population, and we can look at the model and see. But I understand 6 million is already for veterans. It's only going to rise, so if we add anything, it may be another million or 2 million.
We do have tax exemption. It's based on the state level of requirement. We also enacted in 2016, I believe, tax exemption for hardship cases.
Exactly.
And that's at a certain income level.
Yeah.
And that, that's something that we probably could look at again for broadening.
Maybe dip the income level to see, just see where it is. Not for this budget?
Yes.
For next year.
Okay, great. We'll put that on the list.
I got you.
Thanks.
I'd just like to say thank you for doing that example because there are so many people, if they're not into real estate, they don't really understand as their assessment is going up and why. And so I think that's a good measure, especially for people who are watching the work session and hopefully it'll be on the website or something because I've had a lot of questions about that as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any more questions at this time from Council? Okay. I think now we're going to move into the recommended operating budget adjustments and reconciliation process. I think we have some disclosures to read first. I will go first. I, Philip Jones, have a personal interest in the consideration and adoption of the fiscal year 2025 operating budget as my wife is an employee of Riverside Healthcare, which is affected by this transaction. However, I am not disqualified from participating in this transaction. My signed declaration is on file with the City Clerk. At this time, we'll go to Councilman Long.
I, Cleon M. Long, have a personal interest in the consideration and adoption of the fiscal year 2025 operating budget as I am an employee of Newport New Shipbuilding, a division of Huntington Ingalls, which is a business affected by the transaction. However, I am not disqualified from participating in this transaction. My signed written declaration is on file with the City Clerk.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I, Curtis D. Bethany III, have a personal interest in the consideration and adoption of the FY 2025 operating budget as I am an employee of Ferguson Enterprises Incorporated, which is a business affected by the transaction. However, I am not disqualified from participating in the transaction. My signed written declaration is on file with the City Clerk.
Perfect. I will now turn it over to Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just as a brief reminder, seven weeks ago on March the 26th, 2024, I presented my FY 2025 recommended operating budget. Since then, the City Council's participated in three work sessions and one public hearing continued over two days to receive comments on the proposed budget. The FY 2025 recommended operating budget represents a balanced, responsible financial plan for the upcoming fiscal year, continuing to build on the current fiscal foundation that we have established. This budget supports city core services at the level our citizens demand and is sustainable for the year. There are no user rate and fee increases, nor any tax increases, and the recommended budget is practical, stable, and protects the city's assets. As is the prerogative of City Council, changes to the recommended budget based on public comments and work session information are the option of City Council. The Vice Mayor will now present several items for City Council's consideration for changes to the City Manager's recommended operating budget.
Thanks, Alan. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Of course, Mr. Manager, we appreciate all of the work, the good work that went into putting together this budget. At this time, I also want to thank Council for the responsiveness as we put the final touches on said budget. And so now, I'm going to put my Lisa Cipriano hat on, and I have the clicker. So this is for, this is a first for sure. But what I'll do is I will provide a high-level rundown of the amendments before passing it back to the Mayor for any additional council dialogue. All right, so what you're looking at right now is a summary of the final council amendments as I mentioned, beginning with the most important to the budget, which is the implementation of a 5% general wage adjustment and a step plan for our beloved public safety folks. The next that you see is a 1.5% general wage adjustment for executive management and constitutional officer positions. And that is followed by a allocation of funds for a press secretary position for Council.
Excuse me?
Right.
We're going to go through everything and then you can talk about individual stuff.
And so the, the last increases, these several line items increase to reinforce our commitment to the arts and culture and Council support. So as you can see, for the first A, travel and training, 30K, City Council gifts, clearly you see, but Virginia Arts Festival, Port Ward Foundation, the Green Foundation, Thrive Peninsula, and of course, the Art Foundation. And again, this reinforces the commitment to arts and culture in the city while also supporting Council. So of course, with my accountant hat on, if you do increases, you must also balance the budget. And so in order for us to fund this, clearly you see the total increases come to 218,000. The, this change to three, from 3% to 1.5% generates a savings of about 77,000. So on top of that, we're also going to reduce the City Council contingency fund by 50,000. And then the last piece is reducing general fund non-departmental, non-departmental line items from the City Manager's side of the budget, which equals about 90, 92,000. And with that, I will turn it over to the Mayor.
So first of all, I want to say thank you to a lot of people. One, thank you to Alan for your recommended budget. Like I've always said, I think that's your 96, 97% solution. Where's Lisa? Lisa, thank you for the emails and the comments going back and forth over the last couple of weeks. And thank you to the Vice for the reconciliation process. I have five or six things that we can talk about. I've talked to everyone individually today as well, multiple times last week. I'm just going to say, going forward with the process, I actually like how we do the reconciliation process. I think we can do two things. I think number one, we can take a look at having one, public hearing, which will give us more time. Or number two, we take a look at extending the budget so we don't have to pass it until June, but we like to do it with the schools in tandem because that makes sense. So I think the process needs to be codified and more fleshed out, but I do appreciate everyone's comments and timelines that we had delivered. I'll save my last comments, but we're going to start on this side and we're going to go, and everyone's going to have their time. And then there's no, there's no vote that that's being taken, but everyone can have their, their time and then I will wrap up. Thank you. Councilman Harris.
Well, yeah, going back to, we had a conversation last week in regards to the 1.5. I said I would love if we're going to do it because I know it was talked about being flat all the way and don't have any raise, but I said it too. And then look, going back and looking at the tax rate that we just looked at and it says going up 2.4, I just wanted to be note out, I would really still consider staying in over less than two, but you know, we said that was a consensus amongst us.
Thank you. Councilman, our Councilwoman Woodbury.
Yeah, I have probably a quite many of these, so do you want to hear them all at one time or do you want to go to room?
Yeah, everyone can have the ability to say it. I think there's already been a consensus, but the, the point of the chair is not to direct conversation, but everyone can get their time. I think there was a process. I think the line items were adjusted. I will say, the one thing I forgot to say was, the most important thing is that our firefighters and our police are going to get the pay raise. That's the biggest line item. That's a few million dollars. So I appreciate that. I also appreciate that that pay raise will not happen in January, but will happen within the next two months. But Pat, I'll turn it over to you and then to Tina.
Now, is the City Council training travel additional 30,000 or is that the total? What is, what is it now?
It's an additional 30, taken from the contingency fund.
Meaning from the Council's contingency fund?
Correct. To, in order, the balance, the budget is still balanced. If we add things, things must be subtracted. What was subtracted to fund City Council priorities was taken from our own money. So that way, everything balances internally.
So 30,000 now, in addition to what we have now, what do we have now?
That's correct. 30,000 plus the 10, in order to participate in VML, First Cities, a lot of things that we have going on. There's been in the past a sense of making the money work. Everyone has a line item. Once you go over that, it's done.
So the 30,000 is addition to 10,000, which is now what we have?
I'm not sure what it is now is in addition to what that currently is.
Lisa, do, by chance, do you know?
27,500 in the current year, so we go to
50.
Is that doubling that?
Correct.
Is that correct? Yeah, I think that's excessive. I don't agree with that because, I mean, that's not what we, what these jobs for is to serve the public, not to serve ourselves and to think about the people we serve. And I, it sounds to me like we're turning into a travel organization. City Gifts, I don't have any problem with that one. The Virginia Arts Festival, I have an enormous problem with because we really don't get any art things over here on this side. Most of them are on the South Side. So why are we giving them $30,000 more? They used to have coffee concerts at Ferguson Center. They don't have those anymore. They have them on the South Side. So I think we ought to look at what we're getting for, before we add $30,000 to it.
I appreciate said comments, Councilman Woodbury. We've taken a look at it. This is the council consensus. There were some things that were included, some things taken out. So it's less of a line item. This was what, what we were able to get at least consensus on.
And the conversation was had with the Virginia Arts Festival on doing more performances over here. So a lot of these conversations happened.
But what did they say? Are they going to do more?
Well, they did for this year because they had the, what, the Alvin Ellie dancers and then last couple of weeks, there were the Theater, Dance Theater of Harlem.
Correct.
Which were big deals compared to what they used to do because I know they had different events, but they were, from the ones I went to, not just at the Ferguson Center, but at schools, low attendance.
Right.
Because a lot of, they weren't usually publicized.
And I think going forward, and I'll say this when everyone has their, their time, I think what's going to help this is the council committees, especially when it comes to, I think the largest amount of money that everyone's eyes go to is going to be that community, what's it called, Alan?
CSAB.
The community support. So there's over 3.5 million dollars that we allocate to nonprofits. And a lot of those nonprofits, it's usually like a, we got this last time, let's add 4% and go from there. At any time, we can pivot to, we're going to only fund three or four. We can fund double. We can decrease, it's, it's all on what council priorities are. I know there's been an appetite to, if we're doubling down on the year of the youth, then sometimes maybe for next year for the CSAB, we take a look at all of the amazing youth programs, who needs helmets, any fields, et cetera. So that's, that's how we're able to do it going forward, I think, next year. But we'll be more involved, at least in the CSAB process.
So what is the Port Ward Foundation, 20,000? Haven't they always done the funds themselves or have we paid for them?
There, there's a lot that goes into it. And so what, what I'm trying to do is, the consensus was reached last week on, I think, 20 different line items. So everyone has sort of vetted all of these things through. The one thing that some, we wanted
Well, excuse me, because I wasn't born to become social, is why I'm saying what I am, why I'm asking what I am.
It's in the email.
Yeah, it was, it was sent out in emails, but what, what, what I'm going to say is the, oh, the thing that what people wanted to put in that was not put in, legal, Bob pulled it out, was an organization who did not go through the CSAB process came to the public hearings. So that was the only one that was pulled out due to legal reasons, to make it fair.
Which one was pulled out?
The Symphony Orchestra because they were, they did not apply through the process. So they're unable to do the CSAB. So that was the only one that I went in and pulled out myself. So everything else has been, through the emails, has been sent, is, is what council, the consensus is on.
Do we have any projects under the Public Art Foundation? Do we have anything pending? Do we have anything proposed?
There's, I think, a few things. And I actually think, you know, for going to next year's budget already, which we can always go to, I actually like what Councilman Harris and I discussed. I think we've pivot a lot toward the youth. So I think that's, I think it's youth, sports and arts. I would love that to be the focus. In a perfect world, if Bo's right, we got the $40 million this week from the state. We'll get, fingers crossed, Florence, what, 400 million here pretty soon. I think the arts are going to be the next step on the infrastructure.
Well, those are my questions. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I already expressed everything to all of you, so I don't have anything.
Thank you.
I want to say I'm, I'm really thankful that we were able to get the step plan with the fire, police and sheriff to make sure we're competitive with other localities. I want to clarify or just to point, the executive management, that's not going to be standard going forward because we're, we're trying to recraft the budget to look more for performance metrics. And so I just wanted to make sure that's, that's clear when I vote later on this evening that that's a performance metric that we're trying to transform the city budget into. So we know our, our departments are working towards certain goals and the leadership is, is locked step with that. Other than that, I don't have any other concerns with this budget. We've already talked about some of these items. I'm glad that we took from the City Council contingency to fund these other city councils so this money moving back and forth is not changed to what City Council is already getting this year or previous years. We're just going to move it around, have line items. That way, we don't have a big City Council contingency budget and not really know how this money's being spent. I think it's good that we have line items set aside for how we're actually going to spend the money City Council-wise.
Yeah. We'll, we'll go, just, just for a point of order, we'll, we'll go to the Vice and then back. Everyone should, everyone speak once and then we can go second.
No, thank you, Mayor Jones. And of course, I said it already, but I'm
contingency budget, and not really know how this money's being spent. I think it's good that we have line items set aside for how we're actually going to spend the money city council-wise.
We'll go, just for a point of order, we'll go to the vice and then back. Everyone should, everyone speak once, and then we can go second.
No, thank you, Mayor Jones. And of course, I said it already, but I want to say thank you again to council and the responsiveness. I mean, I get it, newer processes, but at the same time, everyone answered the call. So, I appreciate you all so much. I support everything that we have going on here. And priority number one was ensuring our public safety folks were taken care of. And so, big shout out to our budget office, the manager, for allowing this to happen, for sure, and working with us. That's all.
Yep. I'll, actually, I'll go to you, Pat, and then I'll finish briefly.
Well, I was going to ask about the new position, the press secretary.
Yeah.
Don't we have, I mean, our communication department is usually the one that sends out things for the council. So is that where this person will be located?
No, this is going to be for city council. We sat down with communications. We have, this is a more active council, and so there's, it's not fair to our current comp staff for, we're putting in a lot of work on them. And so, decision was made to just have someone in-house. So all letters, all everything, will be now in-house.
And who does that person report to?
We're still working on reporting criteria. First is, we got to pass the budget, and then we'll worry about that. But it's going to be probably housed in the clerk's office. So I'll say a few things, and then we will go to comments, ideas, suggestions. I know you're speaking on the breakfast.
Oh, yeah.
It's right here. So I'll say a few things. So the first thing is, when I look at the reconciliation process, I've always said that if there's no left or right lateral limits, then you're going to have a sort of free-for-all. And so, talking to the city manager, city attorney, and city clerk, we're going to now use, for any council amendments, we're going to use an ad or a drop form. And what we're going to bake into the process is, you know, we are not allowed to touch the budget until after the public hearing, by charter. We can do no changes. We are going to increase the time, so there's going to be a work session dedicated to those amendments. If said amendments are not in on time, so be it, alright? During this process, we had a timeline. People submitted their amendments. The vice put together where we could get consensus on, and that's where we came at. So some things are in there, some things are not, but that's the process going forward. I think for the executive compensation, what I've always said is that, I think there are, it should be performance-based, right? Tied to everything. So it should be, some people should be getting 8% or 9%, and some should be flat. It just depends on the KPIs and the operating plan. So I think in our current thing, I think when you just give top individuals, including council, just a blanket thing, I'd rather do it where some people are more, they go 5, 7, or 8%. But that's going to be with the compensation study that we have going on, as well as some things, we're going to redo how we're doing it. And the last thing, I think we look at the constitutional officers. I think more than just the supplements, it's, we need to look at the state code and look at what is given, what we're currently giving to peoples in those offices. There's a lot that we give. Maybe we need to give more, et cetera, but we need to take a holistic look on our supplements. Right now, it's not regulated. Some are over, some are under. And so, I think when we do this study in the summer, that's going to be the way to regulate all of this. So, it is not a perfect process, but I think it is the best one we have right now. So.
But I do have concerns, because I saw our city manager came up with his budget, which I thought was very good. And then, all of a sudden, a whole list of things were turned in by the council that were to do with personnel, which I had asked that we be reminded of the handbook for mayors and council members. And I specifically asked that, because, as I understand, where pages 20 and 21 talks about the manager and the council, and how specific they are supposed to be, or not be, in addressing individual salaries for the people that work for us. And it is the manager's budget, and that we could give him input into it, but it is his decision to make what the people who are the employees make, and what raises they get, and what, whether they get, I mean, when I saw the memo that said, these four department heads should not get any raise, or should get 1.5 instead of 3, I mean, that is interfering, in my opinion, against what the, and I have asked that everybody get this, and look at it, the handbook for mayors and council members, as to what authority we have in individual decisions about different department heads, and about how much we can actually say, you know, you can't get these department chairs any, they're not allowed to get anymore because they're making too much money. We don't have that prerogative, according to this handbook.
Yeah. So I'll say this, and then we're going to move on. So we, as someone who's read the charter multiple times, it is the prerogative of council to look into the management of all departments, to set compensation, and to add, subtract, or delete line items from the budget. So that is verbatim. So, that is just, it's not an accurate statement. And I would say, the way that I look at this-
Could I have a copy of that?
Yeah, I will, it's very easy. I looked at it about 10 minutes ago.
Yeah.
100%. Yeah. Have talked to, yeah, we are able to do that. That's why it's been done, because we did it. The way that I look at is this, I see this as an opportunity. I see it as an opportunity where top performers are no longer bound by just general 1, 2, 3, et cetera. Top performers are able to go above and beyond that. And so, I think, when you look at the holistic compensation, it is the fiduciary responsibility of city council, not one person, but city council as a body, to do, to make sure that the budget is balanced. So what we have here, and what I always go to, and I appreciate the vice for this, is we are going to pass a billion-dollar budget tonight, which invest heavily in our police and fire. And right now, I think we're spending some time on 60,000, which is probably .02 basis points of what we're talking about. We amended the budget for fire and for police. We've amended it with this, and that is the prerogative of city council. Not one person-
Okay, that's great, but fire, I'm just, I'm talking about individual department heads and that kind of thing.
Yeah. City council says that.
That is, to me, why we have a city manager.
I agree. And the charter says, says we can do something. So I appreciate everyone's comments. I appreciate the emails that were answered in a timely way, so that way we could put all of this together. And I think going forward, I'll take some of that. We can clean up the process, and we can go from there. So, thank you all. And next up, we will talk about comments, ideas, suggestions, with, starting with Councilman Long, I believe. You want to bring something to the table?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. So, the Peninsula Alphas, Zeta Lambdas, hosting a Father's Day Breakfast and Scholarship Presentation. It's June 15. Mayor Price is going to be the speaker. This is their inaugural. Money goes towards scholarships for individuals in our community, high school students in our community. And I'm asking for us to support a table for $1,000.
They're all black, all black only?
No, it's not all black. What are you asking?
What I'm saying is, are all of the scholarships given just to black students?
No. It would be for men, boys. It's no qualification based on race.
Alright, thank you.
I think you have the proper signatures, is that correct?
I do have, I have all the signatures for Councilman Ely, because he's not here tonight.
Okay. I think we have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, let's call the roll. Move to second, please call the roll.
Councilman Harris, Mayor Jones, Councilman Long-
Four.
Councilwoman Vick-
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury, Vice Mayor Beck-
Four.
Thank you.
We'll start.
We'll just keep going around.
Yeah, I had a concern about the, and several calls from citizens in reference to the Huntington, former Huntington site, Doris Miller site, about the continuous issue, the continuous issue of the overgrown grass over there, like immensely overgrown. And so, I'm wondering, I did text Harold Roach today, just to find out who's supposed to be responsible for that. And he said, the development, Andy Brooks and Development. But my thing is, I would like to, and Florence, I don't know if this goes to you, or who it goes to.
According to her face, she's not. She doesn't know what's happening.
Oh, I couldn't see your face, I'm sorry. But I would love for us, I think we probably could save dollars if we, it seemed like it wouldn't be difficult to get it cut on a schedule. Because by the time you have to get people, when it's all the way this high, that's, we should be able to do better than that. And as we're, you know, doing different things to the site, well, not me, but the construction crew, whoever's responsible, that we need to just do better.
One sec. I think Councilwoman Vick's talking. Are you done, Councilwoman?
Yeah, I'm finished. I'm finished just for that issue.
Florence, or who else, who wants to take that back there? Bo?
Yeah. So that was brought up, Councilwoman Vick. And they've looked to contract that out. It was excessive on the cost. So we're working with some of our internal assets to address the issue there. We expect construction, hopefully, in the coming months, but we know we need to keep that in a decent, because it's getting too high. So, we're going to try to address that with some of our internal assets.
And then getting comments from people that would this be allowed in another area of the city. And so, I'm just really disturbed to think that we can't get this on a schedule, you know, to just save money, number one, help the community look decent, number two, and just get it on a schedule. So hopefully, we can find somebody to do that. And my only thing I was concerned too about, from the boards and commission reception, the attendance seemed very low from our past, as far as our boards. And several people did tell me that they didn't even get an invite or email. So I just hope that we can figure out with that what happened, and to realize too, that we have a wide array of participants, inclusive of age differences. And I just hope that we realize that some of the places we choose for people who are, may have some type of, I don't know if disability is the politically correct word, restrictions is the word, Pat? Thank you. That they'll be able to not have to, you know, endure so long to get there. So some of the things we need to really look at for that event, because it's usual, and more activities for the people, because they, most of them really volunteer, they volunteer. They don't really get paid. So, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Woodbury?
Oh, I should have said congratulations. I would just like to, because I have been concerned about some of the individual and specific recommendations that council have been given for certain things, I would have asked that the handbook of the Virginia mayors and council members be, run off again. And I would invite you to look at pages 20 and 21, 58 and 59, you can just put it down, and just remind yourself what our limitations are, and what our purposes in serving the people about, and a lot of that self-serving. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Harris?
I want to have a day to face.
Vice? No. So I'll just say, I'll save most of my comments for city council meeting tonight. But where's, I don't want to miscall anyone. If you were involved in midnight basketball, could you please stand? Midnight basketball crew? David, Gabe, who else? Is that the other crew? Alan? Everyone who's in the back, alright.
Stand up. Stand up.
Bo, Steve, alright, thank you. You guys can sit down. So, I know, I was able to go downtown. I think the vice was able to go uptown, maybe with a few other members. And sorry, John, I'll come to you. I think it's a really great program. Thank you so much for, one, for council. That was a council priority. We ran on the, I ran on the idea of bringing that thing back. And so, I think when you look at the summer jobs program, and you look at the midnight basketball, I think like that is doing the work. I would encourage, I can't be out there every night at midnight, but I would love to encourage, you know, depending on your district, to come out and support. It's a lot of, I think there was extra pizza, and Gatorade, and a bunch of stuff left over. But, in my mind, that is the center of gravity for Newport News, is our youth, and we have to continue to invest in them. So, I appreciate everyone that was involved. The second thing that I will, well, actually, John, I'll let you go, then I'll finish up. You got anything? How was the ceremony?
It was really good.
Congratulations.
And the last thing I'll say is, I appreciate everyone's work in the budget. I think when you look at the reconciliation process, some of my things were taken out, some things were added, right? So I think, I think the best part of a compromise is that, like, you know, people try to get what they want, but no one is happy. So I appreciate you taking the lead on that, and making sure you took seven people's priorities. People who, there was a timeline, there was an email, we were able to take all the priorities and put them together, and get somewhat of a cohesive document. I think next year, let's ensure that we're able to get that maybe two weeks earlier. If we answer some emails, we can get that. And then the last thing I'll say is, I think when you look at what city council is, I'm excited for the next council retreat. There's been a lot of good things that have happened in Newport News. If you think about the All-American City, you think about Bloomberg, Jefferson Lab, and what, Councilwoman Woodbury, I push back on your, on your statement. I actually need, I need all of you to be traveling. I need you to take over League of Cities. I need you to do Virginia First Cities. That is the only way to increase the gravitas of a city that I think has, for too long, been overlooked, is because we don't do these things on a national level. And I do believe that, if you look at the amount of money we brought back from state and from federal, it is a direct result of people that have been traveling. So, it is a prerogative of this council to do and to set the will for the city, and that's what we are doing, and we will continue to do. And with that, we stand adjourned.